One minute. I hear the bells. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to council. This is the 10th meeting of the 143rd Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. What a beautiful spring day we're having here in February. I will start off with, is there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none, we'll go to minutes.
Your worship, I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on February the 6th, 2023 be confirmed. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next item.
Council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item is regarding the municipal contribution to the YWCA St. Thomas Algen Tiny Hope Project. Have motion that report S E S S O two, 2023 relating to a request for a municipal contribution to the YWCA of St. Thomas Algen Tiny Hope Project. Be received for information and further the council support the YWCA St. Thomas Algen Tiny Home Hope Project with a $3 million commitment in principle. Contingent on a successful outcome from the rapid housing initiative application process and the provincial contribution request. And further, the council direct the mayor and clerk to prepare and execute a letter of support in principle to be included in the application for the rapid housing initiative and to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Moved by councillor McCauley, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions and comments? Councillor Wookiee.
Thank you very much, your worship. I have a couple of questions for Ms. Sheridan regarding this request. So Ms. Sheridan, if, let's say that the project does not get the full higher level of government support they're looking for. Can you make some comment about whether our contribution would be prorated or what would the situation be? What's the understanding therein? That's the first question. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you through you, Mayor, to councillor Wookiee. The report before you tonight is only relating to the RHI application and the provincial contribution. There would not be a prorating of anything. So if this RHI application was not approved, then the YWCA would go back to their board and they would look at a new budget and may come back to council with a different request, but the RHI application will probably be awarded in June or July.
Thank you very much. Next question is that, so we're being asked for $3 million to support 40 units. So that's about $75,000 per unit. And nice thing is they're not all one bedroom apartment, one bedroom dwellings, because of course we need them for families, not just single people. And I guess I, as a representative of taxpayer, I have an obligation to ask, is $75,000 per unit a kind of good deal for us in relative to what else might be out there? And we've made very clear, we want to, we want to support affordable housing. And I just want for the public and for our benefit to know how is this in the scheme of things? Is this, is this a good deal for us? Is this something that may be a little more expensive than other units might be? And maybe in reference to some of the other railway lofts and a few of the other things we've done. Thank you.
Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you through you, Mayor, to councillor Wookiee. I think it is important to reiterate that there are one, two and three bedroom units. That's a big deal for our community. We need affordable housing and supportive housing. There's no question. And I know everybody on council talked about that during the election. I also am very happy that the proposed end date is December 2024. So that will give us those 40 units in a year and a half, which is pretty amazing. I would say from my, in my opinion, that $3 million is a great investment. When you think about if we built it ourselves, it would probably be 15 million, 16 million dollars. We would have the upkeep, we would have the general maintenance and we don't presently offer the supportive part of housing. So being able to offer both supportive and affordable is really important. And the other thing is that they, they've been working with us for years. They're well known and well respected in our community, but also they're a big partner with our By Names list. And so they have a real passion to help with homelessness and also women and youth. And so I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity for us to step up as a city and support.
Thank you. And then I just, thank you, Ms. Sheridan. And then I'm hoping to ask the treasurer, Mr. Sheridan, a question. I see he's on Zoom call. If we're committing $3 million to this, I always like to ask the treasurer how the treasurer feels about the situation because last time I checked, I'm not the treasurer and I'd like to hear what he thinks about, you know, acquiring more debt. So if we could, I could ask the treasurer for a brief commentary on that. Thank you.
Mr. Sheridan?
Thank you. The, we will have some money. We have sold some units and I believe there was some money. We've sold some from public housing units and I believe we'll be able to use some of that money towards this project, which will maybe half, maybe between one, $2 million may be available for that. So the, the difference would be not too difficult to finance either through debt or through another means.
Thank you.
Done. Councillor Peters?
Thanks very much, your worship. A few questions while Dan's on there right now. Is this a property that will pay property taxes or will it be exempt from property taxes?
Mr. Sheridan?
If, I believe they will probably apply to MPAC to be tax exempt. Many of those type of properties apply to be exempt. So I, I, I can, it'll be, we won't have any say in it, but they could, they likely would.
Good thanks. The, is there any room? When I look at the development charges of $620,000 on this, do we have any wiggle room within development charges that we can waive some fees or exempt fees or are we, are our hands tied when it comes to those fees, Lou?
We'll go to Mr. Pompilly and treasurer's still there if we need him. Mr. Pompilly?
Yep. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor's question. Yes, there are some opportunities to look at DC's. There are a couple of avenues. The, with Bill 23, it would waive development charges for affordable units, which these would qualify for. However, as I understand it, that portion of C23 hasn't received royal assent. So that, that process isn't available at this point. It may, that may change by the time permits are issued. There is also an opportunity through the CIP program to make that request. And I'm, I'm meeting with the applicant to discuss some of those options this week.
My final question, your worship, is if, if we say yes to this, what does this do to any other potential capital projects that may be out there? I think of an aquatic center as, as an example, or anything else that may come along. If, does this, we, you know, we, we've just come off our significant commitment to the hospital that has freed up some funds. But we're sort of dealing with this outside of the normal capital budget process. And so I just want to ensure that if we say yes to this, we're still going to have the opportunity to look at some other projects or does this, and if we commit $3 million to this project, how long does that, is it before we could look at any other significant capital projects?
Well, I'll ask the treasurer to answer some of that, but in general terms, if this is a one-off, come to the council to ask. And we put it up against, as Sheridan said, how much it would cost if we went to do this by ourselves. So that's what we're being asked tonight at council. Should someone else come up with a similar project? I'm sure they now would know to bring it to council and we'd have to make that decision then. And on other capital projects, we already suggested in our budget deliberations that if by getting out to the street early and getting some lower quotes on some of the projects we're already doing, we may have a chance to look at other capital additions this year, or this can be part of it.
Mr. Sheridan? Your views on the question councillor Peters asked?
I believe the, well, in terms of the size of the commitment, $3 million, it's a lot of money, but it, it's relatively small comparison to, to what an aquatic center would cost. So I don't think it would impact that directly. It, it would, we have, our next venture is paid off in, I believe, about three years, which will give us some significant money. Savings there. So I, I don't think it really hampers us in the short term, just because of the size of the commitment. But we just have to be cognizant of how much we owe in various places.
Okay. Further questions, councillor Peters? No? Councillor Herbert, then councillor Clark.
Thank you, worship. Well, I, I've been on council now for four, so many months, years. And all we've ever talked about for the last four years is affordable housing. We need more affordable housing. So an opportunity has knocked on our door here where instead of us investing 15 million and doing our own thing, we have an opportunity to work with the YMCA and Doug Terry. And I don't, I don't like the word partner. I don't think we're partnering and that's going to be my, my question. What is the responsibility of, of city if we, if we approve the $3 million? Do we have any responsibility on the building after we give the $3 million? That's my question. Heather, I guess. Thank you.
Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you through you, Mayor, to councillor Herbert. There wouldn't be any obligation from the city for upkeep. Is that what you mean of the property or anything like that? There wouldn't be, there'll be an agreement that will be related to the length of time that they're going to have affordable and supportive housing. And there's an agreement, there'll be an agreement around tenancy selection. But when it comes to the property itself and how it's maintained, that we would have nothing to do with that.
Okay, thank you. Follow up question. Go ahead. How, how long do we have to pay the $3 million? Is it right upfront or is it something over a period of four or five years or three years?
We've only talked about it as a $3 million like ask upfront. But if it were an issue that the city could only provide one and a half in 2023 and one and a half in 2024, then we could review that with the Y and the NRHI application to see if that would be permitted. If that's what you mean by that.
Yes, yes. So I'm going to follow up to Dan while he's on there. Thank you, Heather. So, so Dan, are we in a good shape to put up $3 million or is it something we have to take from reserve fund? Or are we just say yes tonight and then work it out for the next two years, pay the $3 million the next two years? Is that your thought?
Yes, if we, if we have to give that money, it's not going to really tie our hands, excuse me, for other capital projects. We, we have enough in reserves that we could do an internal borrow and then replace it for the next couple of years.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, councillor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I think this is the deal of century. Anytime you can get 40 units for $3 million, we should be jumping all over this as quick as we can. Let's sign up for the $3 million tonight. It's a, it's a needed project. It helps the, the most needy in our community, brings people downtown. It cleans up a brownfield site. I mean, it hits so many bullet points for the city. I can't wait for the project to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I just want to add my support to this. Most of the questions that I had were answered, especially the CIP one. That was something I was going to ask if this would qualify underneath, but certainly support this 100% and always willing to work with partners when they come forward like. And $3 million over the next capital budget certainly won't be an impact, I think, for many other projects that we will be able to consider.
Further questions from council? I'd like to point out that Lindsay Rice is here today. We've had a lot of conversations with Ms. Rice over the last little while about, about the goodness of this project and, and the, and the city's now voting on a contribution to, to it. I don't want to in any way diminish that there's still a need out there from a fundraising point of view from the project itself. And so I see Lindsay also nodding to that. The city's contribution will not take away the need for our community to continue to help the YWCA Doug Terry Homes and Sanctuary Homes on this project. It is a community project. So I wanted to make sure that we shared that also. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, then on the report, all in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Yeah. This council just agrees with itself all the time. Well, good work, good work, team. Next item for tonight.
I worship unless there are any further items from the members under strategic direction and development. Will now move into community engagement and services. Nothing on the agenda at this time unless there are any items from the members. And seeing none, will now move into infrastructure and civic operations. If there are any items from the members. Seeing none, will now move to corporate governance and administration. A first item relates to the Parks and Recreation Services Fees Bylaw. I have a motion that report PR O four 23 relating to the Parks and Recreation Services Fees Bylaw be received for information. And further that staff be authorized to prepare pursuant to sections 10.2.7 and 390, section 391 of the Municipal Act. A new fees by law to amend by law 188 dash 2002 moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Wookiee.
Questions or comments on the fees by law? Councillor Clark, then councillor Kohler?
Just a quick one on the walk-up rate or what is the walk-up? For example, if a school wanted to rent the ice for an hour, it mentions there that minor sports in schools would be 190, 18 under the new thing, new rates. And then it talks about a walk-in rate. So if I was a principal, I'd be walking in and trying to get the $128 fee. I'm just wondering what, what that means or how, how would you, how do you go about getting the walk-in rate?
Well, let's see what Mr. Bray can do to clear this one up. Mr. Bray?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to councillor Clark. The schools have a special rate. The other rate is, is for individuals such as yourself. If I'm reading that correctly.
So if an individual wants the ice, it's $128, but if a school wants it, it's $190?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess the way around that is you, you get the PTA to rent it? Okay, thanks.
Councillor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I, I don't want an answer tonight. I'm just wondering if, if Jeff could report back after what the anticipated impact benefit to your budget will be. I, I wanted to ask, give you the heads up earlier, so I don't expect you to have that, but just maybe later you can, unless you do have it.
I, yeah, through you, Mayor Preston. We did, I had stopped to a very high level, putting about 5% across the board. So we're looking at a revenue increase based on registration off of our booking software from 2022 of about $61,000. Now that doesn't include items like walk-ins, the rates for the memory trees, memory benches, public swims, public skates and advertising. So there would be revenue coming from that too.
Well, great. Thank you, Mr. Bray. Councillor Herbert and councillor Wookiee.
Thank you, worship. A couple of questions for you there, Jeff, through, to the mayor. How did you decide? You said, was it across the board, 5% for everybody or different rates for different people? And if it was a different percent, how did you decide what the different percent was?
Through you, Mayor Preston. Thanks for the question. We looked for the big items, you know, rentals of registration for ice, pool lessons. We looked at comparators across the region. Some things we looked at haven't been increased in a long time. A lot of the programs take a lot of materials to run them. So you'll see a greater increase there. It looks like a lot of money, but percentage wise, but it's not a lot to the whole cost of the program. So we wanted to at least try to break even with the programs. I think some of them are losing money. So we looked at them individually and raised them accordingly, either to be competitive with our, our surrounding municipalities or just to make them more profitable.
Okay, thank you. Follow up question?
Okay.
I, I see you want us to approve this March the 6th. So what will happen to a lot of the teams and, and groups that have already approved the budget for this year? And now they have to change, change the budget after March 6th? They have to charge people more to do things if they were? I'll just say for the forward slow pitch, they book all summer, they've got all their game fees, everybody has to pay a certain thing. And now March 6th, they're going to have to increase it or is that the way it's going to work?
Yes. No, we're trying to get ahead of that because per the report, we're going to do a consolidated fee increase in the future, but we have spring registration coming up. Hockey's just winding up. They haven't done theirs. Ball is just doing their registrations now. So these new fees, fees would apply to all the new programs and sports rates moving forward.
So would the teams, all the different groups, minor hockey, everything, inform that there'll be a budget change?
Yes, we've met with all the groups and they're aware.
Thank you. All I wanted, thank you.
Councillor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Reading this, Mr. Bray, I just want to say that you have my support. I mean, a 5% increase when some of these things haven't been increased for a long time. The level of inflation that we're dealing with, I think that this is very reasonable and I appreciate the amount of work that goes into this. And I looked at this, I was a little bit scared to be honest when I, you know, because I'm like, I hope this is not too much. Because A, it generates duress on people who are, we're trying to get people to participate. But thank you for the realistic and modest increases.
Thank you. We, we took that into account. We understood that it hadn't been increased since 2019 and we put it up to where it was, it'd be a bit of sticker shock there. So we're being respectful of that.
Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, unless there are any further items for the Corporate Governance and Administration Committee, I will now move into council reconvened to regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee of the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by councillor Kohler, seconded by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
No reports of committees this evening. We'll move to petitions and communications. A first item is a copy of a letter addressed to the Federal Minister of Transportation from the city of Brantford regarding passenger rail service in southwestern Ontario. The second item is a letter received from Huron County regarding improvements to the Cannabis Act. And third item is notice received from the municipality of Central Algen of a public information center to be held February the 21st from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Masonic Center regarding the East Side Development Area Sanitary Sewer Schedule C Municipal Class Environmental Assessment Study. And no further items on the agenda at this time, your worship, unless there are any items from the members.
Councillor Kohler?
For the cannabis, cannabis one, I, I know they're asking for call for action. So are we automatically sending that? Are you looking for direction or motion from council? Cause I, I know we have as a EDC a while back sent some correspondence to the government about some of the things that are in here. And I, I, I agree with it and I think we should be throwing our support behind it because I know we've received many of those complaints. And hopefully we, if we had our support behind it, we could maybe help address some of it. I wish it actually had somewhat the recreational growing because I receive a lot of complaints about people trying to sit in their backyards and dealing with that too.
I, your worship, I could have a motion that council support the letter and that a copy of the resolution be sent to Huron County, the Federal Ministry of Health, our MPP and our MP. Seconded by councillor Clark.
So now it's moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Councillor Wookiee and then councillor Herbert? Not on this, another one? Okay.
Councillor Wookiee? Thank you very much, your worship. I'm generally supportive of this, but when I read this, it seems to be very specific to cannabis operations, not somebody smoking in the backyard, but cannabis operations in residential areas. And I get the feeling that that is more of a kind of, depending on what our area you're in outside of a town, that there could be a facility right beside your, your house. So to me, this is more, no offense, like I, I get the, the problem. But it's more a specific thing to a rural community that might have operations, like production operations in our area. I mean, if it's in an industrial area, we have all sorts of rules regarding what smells and sounds are, are okay in an industrial area that are different than a residential area. So although I'll support this, I believe that it's, it's not really exactly where we're coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? If I can, from the chair, we have over the past four years, probably before COVID, spent some time looking at the independent growing for health purposes grower and found we had no, no control from a community at all about looking at their place or their ventilation or anything else. So I have to agree with councillor Kohler that county, county of Huron here is looking at it at least. I'm, I'm not against us supporting their look at it. Further questions or comments? On the motion, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. We will send our support to the county of Huron. Councillor Herbert, did you have another point?
Yes, just a, a comment. I see Sean Dykes in attendance here tonight and I read with interest the prestigious award that EDC received. I, I think for the public, it'd be nice if Sean would just give a little comment on it, just so the public knows how, how important this award was to our city. If you don't mind, Sean?
That's great, councillor Herbert. I was going to do that in new business, but we'll do it here if you'd like. We'll call this new business. Mr. Dyke, can I have you come to the, to the podium and, and please share with us, first of all, the congratulations on your election as the Chair of EdCo, the Economic Development Corporation of Ontario. Great to have somebody from St. Thomas leading that. But tell us about your and your staff's awards from the other night.
Thanks very much. I turned it off. It was actually really exciting. We, we had no idea we were even being considered for the top awards. So basically, we had three awards that we received. Elle Krevitz in our office won the Bright Ideas Competition for her work that she's been doing on housing, which once we have a copy of it, I'd be happy to share with council. It is, it's a really good tool, I think, for municipalities and she's done a great job with her team. So she gave an amazing presentation at the conference and it was, people were talking about it actually on the other day. So it was fantastic that way.
Yes.
Subsequently, we won a tourism award for the mural festival and the work that's been done on public art in the city. So again, thanks for your support on making those things happen. We couldn't do it without you. And then that award turned, you have to win an award there to actually be considered for the larger award, which is awarded by the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario. And she came up on the screen and she was doing a video presentation and we were all just, I can't say we were actually paying attention. We were still excited about winning the tourism award. And then we, she said St. Thomas Economic Development. Oh my gosh. And we actually stood up before we even were called up. We didn't even listen to the rest of her message. So I'm hoping to get a copy of what she, what she had to say. But this is actually the second time in seven years that we've won the top award for economic development in Ontario. And from what I can tell, there's, that's never happened before where communities won twice. And for Little St. Thomas, that's pretty impressive. And so we were really pleased to win and I don't know, we were pretty emotional actually and we celebrated nicely.
Well, you, you should be and your staff, the, the rest of your team truly deserves all the accolades of this. And the lieutenant governor's award is not an easy thing to win, as you've said. So congratulations. Make St. Thomas shine and make St. Thomas proud. Way to go.
Yeah, thank you very much. You're right. We Yeah, thank you very much. You're right. We have an amazing team, and we're looking forward to seeing what we can do next.
Are we on New Business then? Great. The, the mayor's got a couple more new businesses. Tomorrow's Valentine's Day, so I'm giving you about eighteen hours' notice if you haven't gone out and got your sweetheart anything. Um, yeah, you're probably in serious trouble or you're out early tomorrow morning. So congratulation on that. And then, uh, Wednesday, uh, the fifteenth is pajama day. Um, both here at City Hall, for those that are participating, and anywhere else. Um, child can, or child cancer awareness has the, uh, fifteenth of February is pajama day. The mayor will be wearing his pajamas that day, and they're, and they're quite sharp. Um, but we, we, uh, to recognize kids that are in their pajamas in a cancer facility and, and, and working to get over it. So Dave Jenkins and Maureen Jenkins, who many of you know, um, really pilot this project. And so if you can, if you feel like, uh, sleeping in a half hour later on Wednesday, you can because you're going to jump out of your bed in your pajamas and head here to City Hall. So congratulations. That's all the items I have under New Business. Council have any more? Nope? All right.
Uh, Your worship, at this time, we'll move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands. Seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Question? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried?
I have a motion by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert, that the bylaws be now read a first time referred to council and committee in the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried?
May we have the first bylaw?
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next bylaw, please.
Second and final bylaws, a bylaw to authorize Mayor Clark to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas and Real Dant Inc. This relates to Commercial Plaza at one thirty-one South Edgeware Road.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Rise and, rise and report the successful passing of the two bylaws.
Lot less work this week, Counselor Gibson. Good work.
Yes.
I worship, I have a motion by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert, that the report of council and committee in the whole on the two bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time, and gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried?
No notices this evening. I worship, there is a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a matter of litigation, including a matter before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land, and a personal matter about identifiable individuals. Moved by Counselor McCully, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Um, before we vote, uh, again, a reminder to those watching at home, and, and we will move into a closed session. And then when we are finished with it, we'll come into open session to vote on anything might have happened in closed session and to adjourn and go home. So thank you all for joining us online tonight. What a very quick meeting, and, uh, all those in favor of moving to closed session? Any opposed? That's carried. We are in closed session.